All right, we're, uh, Jeffrey Hunter. And to be our next members of Board of Alderman. I just, uh, kind of, uh, think for, uh, the future of that, what I would like to do is to announce, um, a force of this reservation that I would just really want to, so early, uh, to know Jeff, uh, as the transportation coordinator for City, whatever, it's probably, uh, in 2095. And I don't know how anyone, uh, can, uh, I'm, and I knew it because there's 19,000 building on a waterway, all the system, uh, buses, uh, all the roads, morning, noon, midnight, of course, with the presence of an A, uh, special transportation. And that's another completely different world. And, uh, and then it's the rest of it. So we, all the coordination, the three bus providers, special, uh, head bussing and the correctionary, I said, uh, and that's how we get the noise of, uh, the implementation requirement. So I've talked a lot about different, uh, state related issues concerning the county correctionary, school, uh, the Charles Park, so, uh, I always enjoy working with him. He's also a substitute for 1984, 1995 years, he was a very part of the education. He's an associate student, a graduate from Harvard College, graduated from the medical school, 1982. And, uh, one of the things that I really envy, be criticized by, um, Jeff and J.J. Jackson, here, who's the lead water ranger, is an organization called J.J. King. And I think you all know, I'm talking about a sort of organization, but probably in those places as well. And I should say, this is called J.J. King, she was founded 15 years ago, just before getting back to the many water residents, uh, holding community meetings, the heartland meeting park every year at that theme, bringing all kinds of, uh, clothing, food, and, uh, hundreds of items, I mean, from every year, back over here, uh, because I was actually trying to take care of J.J. Jackson, and, uh, most of that's why the amount of people that, uh, J.J. takes care of. They also, uh, have a practical tongue. J.J. also has, uh, been around a, they, uh, are community, uh, much, uh, their yearly community donation to the community. Jeff is also a member on the water ranger team, so, and so, this all happens, I'll tell you, uh, Jeff, uh, Kula, who was a great, uh, representative of our, our, uh, Wayne Community, served on the board, and announced, uh, the relocation, uh, whatever, he left his family, home, and then come over, uh, for all of our parents and family, with the same neighbor, he is still, who's quite, so I decided to see what the, um, that section of, uh, military work done. I, uh, as I frequently do, I need advice, ideas, and we call it gathering, and, uh, we talked about it, and, uh, we talked about someone from, obviously, the Eastside District and the, uh, I mentioned, uh, Jeff, like, uh, lady, um, that's probably some, uh, I don't know if you're a contact, only one, uh, currently connected with the program. And there are, and there's a lot, uh, in communities, for us, and, uh, Jeff Hunter, anyone knows him, knows that he's got a hard career, still needs to be, he cares about everyone, sees, he's proud of, uh, his job, uh, and helps our mom from the day, and helps us all, take him home. And, uh, he's got incredible patience, he's got incredible honesty, and, uh, he's got a good sense of community, he's a good, uh, well, he's, uh, uh, Jack, really grateful that here, I'm ready, uh, Jay Larry, who we, is not, he's, um, building other areas and, uh, we're together, so, uh, we're here, we're really grateful to have, um, such a show of, uh, support for Jeff and the community. And I believe he could be one of some, uh, you know, other stakeholders or providers in the community for decades. I believe this is the perfect choice right now. Uh, this man is, 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 what happened here, uh, the, uh, the, uh, I think, uh, we need to, this administration, this city, this across the country, needs to start to recognize and, uh, supported, uh, to have more representation, uh, in the community, important information. And I think that this time, that this, in this place, in this moment in time, we are today, acting as, Jeff, uh, on the board of Alderman, give all our, uh, the, the, uh, it's like, it's, uh, really deep, uh, attack, meet them on the stand. Talking about, it's hard, a lot of all of these years, actually, you know, I've, uh, ordered a long order for all of here. And today, with the, uh, this, I can make a difference for some of the, uh, and I, uh, please love, uh, it's, uh, true, but I also think that, uh, have a true relationship between the, I know we can use some of this parts, as much as we, uh, for, uh, I don't even know what we, uh, we won't, um, work on the station, make a fight on the board, it's not our time, and I think, uh, we need to work together, collaborate together, and start a positive way to change if necessary, so that all, uh, can, uh, that's all. So, so long, uh, well, I'm on your, uh, and, uh, brother who was deeply related, uh, right, uh, you, Jeffrey, uh, you have chosen all of them, of the city of Waterbury, solidly earlier, with the four of the municipal to manage the state, and the municipal to manage the 20, maybe, was, uh, there, uh, they, uh, asked that they do, tend to the dislocation of, um, set up, uh, to bring in, uh, the city, and that you were ready to do this to set up for the best of your skill and ability, so help you God.
First of all, I gotta be, I'm gonna, uh, this place, and this place is where I sit, and I would definitely do my best, uh, on this board, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank my wife, Andrea, Lisa, Hunter. She's a busy worker here. It's a lot that I want to do at my back end. She always there, always there for me, uh, family, brother-in-law, my sister, my nephew, my niece, my son right there, uh, two of our colleagues, what's all of it, I'm gonna be working very hard with you, and there's nothing that we cannot, uh, say, the water expert, especially during this driving time. One of the, uh, the lifeline that I've got, all of it, we come together, we can change. Regular water is, regular water, we can change everything. And I think with this opportunity, and I'm gonna work hard, thank you. And I also say special thanks to my friend, my brother, my two brothers, and that's Mayor O'Leary, Dr. Jimmy Jackson. And that's what I'm saying, thank you.
He's got, he's having trouble with one, the second camera.
All right, we seem to have got some problems, so we'll call to, uh, the, uh, we're all in for Monday, June 22nd. We'll call together the, uh, to order the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman for June 22nd, 2020. If everyone would please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the foundation of America and is the whole of the United States of America.
Present.
Alderman Cavalo.
Present.
Alderman Cotto. Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews. I know he's here. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman New Jane.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Here.
Alderman Prunarowski.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you, and just for the record, Alderman Cotto was on vacation. Um, I think she may have thought we were gonna still be zooming this week, but, um, with that, the next item on the agenda would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with our city sheriff, Mr. Conway. Please state your name and address for the record, there's a five-minute limit, and I'll give you a one-minute heads-up.
First speaker tonight from 11 Stuben Street, Lawrence DePillo.
Good evening, Lawrence DePillo of 11 Stuben Street. I'm here tonight, you have, uh, items three, four, and five on your agenda, and they are from Mr. Scott Morgan, Director of Human Services, and it's requesting approval of new job specifications for lead water service person, retiree, healthcare coordinator, manager of budget development and oversight. I, I looked at the, uh, details online, and, uh, what I didn't see was anything from the Civil Service Commission stating whether or not, uh, these were gonna be level entry positions, and whether or not the 10 points for city residents would apply, as to the, uh, normal five points, uh, for non-city residents, uh, I'm sorry, the, the normal five points that was previously given to city residents for, uh, non, uh, starting jobs. Especially the, uh, person, the lead person here for the water department, that was specifically listed in part of the documents provided previously from Mr. Morgan. So, uh, I'd ask, uh, whether or not the Civil Services Commission has, uh, considered this, and whether or not the 10 points is going to apply to all of these, uh, level entry positions. The other reason I'm here, as, uh, at your last meeting, uh, June 8th, you had item number four, uh, and that had involved F&amp;G LLC in a contract to take care of all of the city's recyclables. And, uh, I listened to what I could of the meeting, and as you know, I called in. Uh, first of all, it was intimated that somehow, that this board could not reject the contract, uh, because it had already been put together and submitted to you. Uh, I've never heard of anything so ridiculous in my life. Uh, you have people in the city who put together contracts, you have people in the city who negotiate contracts, they come before you to be approved or disapproved. And anybody who would tell you that you, disapproving a contract is somehow gonna put the city in jeopardy, is just not telling you the truth. The truth is, no contract is valid until it is after voted on by this board in the affirmative, and then signed by the mayor. And only after the proper signatures are applied, does that contract become valid. And prior to that, the only thing that is, is a proposal before this board, and nothing more. And when I heard it sort of intimated something other than that, I think for clarification, you should know what your responsibility is. It's not to rubber stamp anything, it's to look at the contracts and decide whether they're in the best interest of the citizens or they're not. And don't let anybody ever tell you that you have to pass a contract. You don't. The other issue that came up with that was a timeline. Oh, well, if you didn't pass this contract, even though the vast majority of Waterbury residents had spoken loud and clear for years, that they did not want F&amp;G to receive the garbage contract or the recycle contract for this city, and yet you were told by the administration sitting back here, the, uh, director of finance, the public works director, that if you didn't approve this contract, that by the end of the month, there would be no contract, and the city would have nobody to collect its recyclables. That, believe it or not, gentlemen, is a threat to the Board of Alderman. It's a threat. It's saying, you pass it, or else. Now, what you should have is somebody, when they're sitting down and putting together these contracts or these proposals, report to the Board of Alderman what the progress of these is, these contracts are, because all you're doing is by allowing the administration to bring something to you, two weeks or three weeks before it expires, and then the city has nobody to do business with, that's basically having the mayor's office telling you, you don't matter. You are nothing more than a rubber stamp for the administration, so stamp it approved, and don't ask any questions, because otherwise, two weeks later, the city can't do business. And if that's why you think you're here, a lot of you should also consider moving out of the city. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier, uh, welcome back, um, it's great to see everybody here, instead of on the computer. Um, I would also like to, uh, congratulate Mr. Hunter, uh, I think he is a, a clear fit for the job, um, he's done an amazing job as our coordinator for busing and everything else, kinda watching him get ready for the meeting here, and everybody handing him the packets, it's, it's almost like watching a flashback of him starting out the school year with, uh, everybody handing him the bus routes and, uh, getting the calls from the parents, so I, I, I know he's gonna do a great job, and, uh, you know, I, I applaud, uh, his continued commitment to this city. I've seen it over the years, I think, uh, he's just an incredible person, and, um, I'm glad that, uh, he's just decided to, uh, take on this mission on top of, uh, what he's doing for the city, so I think he should be commended, thank you. Um, secondly, I would like to thank the mayor for, uh, picking, uh, Mr. Hunter, and, um, his commitment to, uh, continuing, uh, whether it's vacancies or, uh, getting people to serve, uh, the continued, uh, uh, his support to get diverse groups, uh, from every community in the city, um, you know, that's why the people ask for Alderman by district, and his commitment to getting every person from every community represented, I think it's just a testament to him, so I would like to thank him for that. Um, I would also like to thank Mr. Hunter for his words tonight, um, you know, living in a city is diverse, is ours, uh, you know, we are all Waterbury strong here, we all come together when, uh, there are people in need, we all come together, uh, to support those who have been hurt, and to hear his words tonight was very powerful, and I applaud you. Uh, Black Lives Matter and all lives matter, there's not a single person in this city that disagrees with that, and I commend you on that, I think that this is a conversation that needs to continue to try and improve not only, uh, the city, but each of our communities. And I would like to say here that, uh, you know, we are fortunate to live in a city, uh, that has some amazing people, uh, we have amazing police officers that do amazing work in our communities, and just like every city out there, we've had some bad apples, but we've dealt with those bad apples, and we've gotten rid of them. But I, I have to say, we have an amazing police department, we have an amazing fire department, um, you know, I know, um, through the last months, it's been a trying time for everybody here with the COVID situation, everybody's been stuck at home, uh, we all saw that horrific video of that Minneapolis officer, there's not a single person in the city, or police officer, or first responder for that matter in the city, that disagrees that, uh, you know, that was just horrific what happened there, and should never happen. But, you know, we need to continue to come together in this city, we need to continue to come together as a state, we need to, uh, not only fight for all of our communities, but we need to continue to fight for our officers, because that incident in Minneapolis set us back, uh, a decade, but it does not represent every single officer that puts on the uniform every day and goes out there, tries to make a difference for our communities, uh, tries to help our communities, and, you know, the naysayers, uh, that have been on Facebook the last couple of days, and, uh, you know, the, the people that came into our city to try and start agitating the situation, and we had a lot of great people here that started peaceful protests, and, and they were rightfully so to start a protest, but to have agitators come into this city, and the state for that matter, and try and hurt our communities, is not the right thing, and we need to continue to fight against that, we need to continue to fight against injustice out there, but, um, I'm glad to see everybody back, um, we have a lot of work to do with the COVID and, uh, the city business, so I hope that we continue, not only as a board, but a city, working together. So thank you very much.
Next speaker from 1400 Meredith Road, Martin Spring.
The Speaker of the House is back. I just wanna say that I'm happy and elated to be here, um, I hope everybody is well, and everybody's doing fine. I did wanna say that Alderman Kula, uh, was a good Alderman, I know I called him several times about issues in my neck of the woods, if you will, and he got back to me right away. I know a lot of you members of Board of Alderman do the same thing, and I also would like to congratulate Jeff Hunter for getting on the Board of Alderman, good choice, Jeff. I know you're gonna be coming to the Waterbury Neighborhood Council, Waterville Community Club, and, uh, the Human Rights Commission, love to have you on board and come and talk with us. I think it's very important that we get together and talk about things, especially now, with the Human Rights Board is so relevant right now with what's been going on around the country, and thank God, you know, things subsided in the city for now, and, uh, hopefully we can all come together for the betterment of the city. Um, just a few other things I did wanna talk about, um, I'm just happy to say that I was really happy to see the Mayor O'Leary appointed Savannah Blaze on the Waterbury Human Rights Commission, she's a graduate of UConn, she's a, uh, a smart girl, and I know she's gonna be a great asset on our board, and, uh, I see a lot of different appointments the mayor made, uh, Board of Public Health, Board of Park Commission, Retirement Board, City Planning, Finance and Audit Review Commission, obviously, Human Rights Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Greater Waterbury Cable Council, Arts and Turrets Commission, Board of Fire Commissioners, Police, Park, um, so many other boards, and Board of Public Health, City Planning, Finance and Audit Review, Finance and Audit, and, uh, the Greater Waterbury Transit District, uh, again, Inland Wetlands, uh, litter commission, I know a lot of different people on that board are good folks, and, uh, also Retirement Board, Zoning Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals. So, I, I'm just glad, but I wanna let you know that, uh, on the Waterbury Human Rights Commission, we have one vacancy, and, uh, would be, have to be filled by a Democrat, and, um, it'd be nice if we could do independents or Republicans, but I, I guess with the charter, we have to go along and do, uh, put a Democrat on, because that's who we're gonna be replacing. So, I had a gentleman by the name of Ian Blake, I don't know if you know Ian, he's African-American, he's a young kid, I know he just joined with the Waterbury Neighborhood Council, and he's like 22, 23 years old, and he's a firecracker, he's a good guy, I love the guy, he's, he's awesome, very smart, articulate kid, and I believe he's also a college graduate, and, uh, he does a lot in the community, he's a vice president of the Waterbury Neighborhood Council, and, uh, he works diligently hard for each and every one of us, and I think that's awesome, man, because, you know, when I see people trying to divide the country, I don't understand, and thank you, Mr. Hunter, for that comment, all lives matter, because, you know, I, I never get a chance to say this about my family, but my family goes back before the Revolutionary War, and there's probably people here that family goes back that far, but they were involved in all the wars in, in the United States of America, from the Revolutionary War to the Civil War, and I actually have ancestors, Mr. Hunter, I'll let you know, that, that are buried down in Gettysburg, two of them that got killed fighting to free the people, okay, and that's a God's truth. So, I mean, you know, this, people gotta understand that this is not a white thing, a black thing, Hispanic thing, or Oriental, this is an American thing, we're all gotta come together for the betterment of all of us, and, you know, we gotta stop the non-cital nonsense, and I don't know why people can't understand that, and that's why I love this board, because it's so diversified, people from all, uh, races, uh, people from all different nationalities, and people from all over.
One minute, Mr. Spring.
Okay, I know, I know, you sound like Karen at home, she says, Martin, you're talking too much, come on. It's all right for her to talk, though, right, that's, a guy can't say nothing. But I did wanna say to everybody, before I go, before I forget, Happy Father's Day to everybody, belated, and Happy Grandfather's Day. I know I'm a grandfather, I'm not ashamed to say I am, still a young guy, but I know Larry's a grandfather too, and Larry DePillo's been a good friend of mine for a very long time. So I did wanna say to my minority leader, Roger Sherman, Roger, as one veteran to another, you're a man of your word, you told me you would submit my name to get back on the board, and I'm looking forward to getting back on the commission as chair on that board, and working very hard with everybody, with our diversified group of commissioners on that board, and I thank you, Mr. President, and everybody, please stay safe, and God bless America, thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. Uh, with that, the next item on the agenda would be approval of minutes for the regular meeting of Monday, June 8th, 2020. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion approved the minutes of the regular meeting for Monday, June 8th, 2020, so moved.
Alderman Lopez.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, yes vote will be to approve, and no vote to disapprove the minutes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. With that, uh, the next item would be, uh, even though we're back here, this is set up to do committee of the whole, and I think that's probably cleanest way to do it tonight, hopefully by the next meeting in July, we'll be back to having the committee meetings as well. Just before we go into committee of the whole, I just want to note that items two, three, four, and five, which are all from, um, Human Resources, are all gonna be held this evening because Scott Morgan had a, a last-minute family issue, he's not He's not able to be here tonight and those are all his items. So we're going to hold those. We'll take them up in July when he will hopefully be here with us. With that, I would entertain a motion, Alderman Brunelli, to go into the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and we're sitting as a committee of the whole. The first item on the agenda is number one, which is I would entertain a motion to approve the 2020 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act applications to the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury, Literacy Volunteers of Greater Waterbury Incorporated, the Mad Attic Historical Society, New Opportunities Incorporated and the Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association. Alderman Martinez McCarthy, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
Actually, Mr. President, I would have to excuse myself from voting on number one, item number one.
Ah, okay, yes. The record will refer that Alderman Lopez will recuse himself as a member of the Hispanic Coalition. Alderman Brunelli, is there a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? I'm sorry. Okay, the record will also show that Alderman Weaver's going to recuse herself as well. Any other recusals? She gets very involved. That's good. Okay, with that, the motion on the floor then is to approve the applications. A yes vote will be to approve them and a no vote to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and approved unanimously. Two, three, four and five, as I noted, we're going to hold. Item number six is on consent. I would entertain, I mean, I'm sorry, item number six, I would entertain a motion to approve a budget transfer within the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020 in the amount of $400,000. Alderman Martinez McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then. A yes vote will be to approve the transfer of $400,000 in the general fund budget and a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously. The transfer is approved. Item number seven, I would entertain a motion to approve a resolution required for reimbursement authorization from the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management, FEMA, for COVID-19-related costs incurred by the City of Waterbury. Alderman Martinez McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion carries. The resolution is approved. Item number eight, I would entertain a motion to approve a professional services agreement with EBS Healthcare, doing business as educational-based services for a three-year period in the not-to-exceed amount of $1,208,828 to provide speech and language therapy services to students with disabilities. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Item number nine, I would entertain a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Access Rehab Centers LLC for a three-year period in the not-to-exceed amount of $2,041,167 to provide speech and language therapy services to students with disabilities. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, I'm sorry, Alderman Lopez.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President. I just wanted to know, anyone here from the Board of Ed who can attest whether or not items eight, nine, 10 and 11 were voting on favor?
I attest to eight, nine and also 10 and 11 were voted on in the affirmative last Thursday.
June 18th.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none. A yes vote will be to approve the professional services agreement and a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the agreement is approved. Item number 10, I would entertain a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Hoffman-Mitlin-Hart Corp Publishing Company for a five-year period in the not-to-exceed amount of $581,871.74 to provide middle school mathematics curriculum. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The agreement is approved. Item number 11, I would entertain a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Teaching Strategies LLC for a five-year period in the not-to-exceed amount of $180,517.50 to provide preschool curriculum assessment material and professional learning services. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the agreement is approved. Item number 12, I would entertain a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Access Rehab Centers LLC for a three-year period in the not-to-exceed amount of $33,335.50 to provide occupational and physical therapy services to students with disabilities. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. A yes vote would be to approve the agreement and a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the agreement is approved. Item number 13, I would entertain a motion to approve a contract for AIDS healthcare and support services in the amount of $204,578 for the period April 1st, 2020 to March 31st, 2022. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anyone here to, I'm just curious, the date of the start of this contract is April 1st. When did this work actually start?
Years ago.
Okay, so this is a renewal of the service. Okay. Is there any particular reason why the contract didn't come before, before the end of the last contract?
They extended it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Motion on the floor then is to approve the contract. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the contract is approved. Item number 15, I would entertain a motion to approve an engineering services agreement, RFP number 6596, for environmental engineering consulting services between the City of Waterbury and Anchor Engineering Services, Inc., in the amount of $399,400. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, but I think you skipped number 14.
Oh, all right, we'll go back to it. Let's do 15 while we're here, then we'll go back to 14.
A motion to approve.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Alderman Lopez, is there any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
I do have a question. I'm just curious as to why this isn't in-house? Is this normally an out-of-house thing? It looks like it's applying for permit applications, the preparation of the applications, doing reporting, but there's also inspections and sampling. So I wasn't quite sure if we always contract that out?
David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Yes, for the last 10 years, we have contracted it out and we've awarded it through the RFP process.
Thank you, David.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, then. The motion is to approve the engineering services agreement. A yes vote will be to approve it and a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the agreement is approved. Going back then to number 14, I would entertain a motion to approve a contract for AIDS healthcare and support services, contract amount of $217,126 for the contract period April 1st, 2020 to March 31st, 2022. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the agreement is approved. Item number 16, I would entertain a motion to approve the state DOT acquisition of property easement rights on the city-owned property within the town of Litchfield for Saw Mill Road lots 1377716 and 1377914. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the acquisition rights are granted. Item number 17, I would entertain a motion to approve a ground lease agreement with the United States Postal Service for the continued lease of 90 nonspecific parking spaces at all times located in the city's 210 Bank Street Municipal Parking Garage. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the lease is approved. Item number 18, I would entertain a motion to approve a temporary staffing services contract with Jackie Carroll Staffing Solutions, Inc. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Item number 19, I would entertain a motion not to disapprove the appointment of the listed, of the listed individuals to the relevant boards and commissions as noted on the agenda. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion not to disapprove.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
It's not on this list. Do you know what he was going on with before he was being called? Oh, okay. I don't know. Yeah. Okay, yeah. Sorry, okay. The motion then on the table with respect to item number 19 is not to disapprove the listed individuals. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the individuals, the appointment of the individuals is not disapproved. Respect to item number 20, I would entertain a motion not to disapprove the reappointments of the individuals listed to the respective boards and commissions set forth in the agenda. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion not to disapprove.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The individual appointments are not disapproved. With respect to standing committees, I would entertain a motion to approve refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of $2,330.08. Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the refunds are approved. With that, I would entertain a motion, Alderman Brunelli, to come out of the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Alderman Lopez.
Second.
Okay, all those, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're back in the regular order of business. And just to close the circle, the following item will be on the consent calendar. Item number one is on consent to approve. Two, three, four, five are hold. Six is on consent to approve. Seven, eight, nine are on consent to approve. 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 are on consent to approve. 16, 17, 18 are on consent to approve. 19 and 20 are on consent not to disapprove the appointments of the named individuals to the respective boards and commissions. And with respect to standing committees, on consent to approve the refunds for tax overpayments. Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the consent calendar passes unanimously. With that, there's no further business to come before the board. I would just like to take a moment to welcome Jeff Hunter. You survived your first meeting. It wasn't as horrific. We look forward to having you on the board and to working with you. So I'm sure we're going to have a great year and a half before the end of this term. So I look forward to it. With that, I would remind you that our next meeting is not until July 20th, so we'll be back here July 20th. Hopefully, by then, we'll be back doing the committee work in the committees. And with that, is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, then. Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned.